Good evening. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting is in properly notice and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication can view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002 and in standard-definition on Channel 2. You can also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire TV on the Go Vegas app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV in the web, the Saturday of the meeting, at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Legions?
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Chair Cherry.
Present.
Vice Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman is excused. Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Flengus is excused. Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have questions, staff is available. There's agendas on both sides of the podium here. On the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Item number four is the public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion? Hello, Councilman.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Just wanted to take a moment to welcome our newest Planning Commissioner for Ward 5, Commissioner Anthony Williams. I want to thank him for him stepping up and answering the call of service once again. I know that it's not easy to serve, and, as you all know, and it takes a commitment and a sacrifice on your personal side and if you make family away from them. And so I wanted to thank you on behalf of the citizens of Ward 5 for the hard work that you're about to put in, and to welcome you. You're amongst a good group. You're going to learn a lot, and you're going to be fully engaged in our community. So, thank you very much, sir. Then I also want to take a quick moment to recognize my friend and to thank her for her years of service, my longtime friend, Commissioner Vicki Quinn. We go way back. I told someone we go back, but I didn't tell them how far we go back, and I didn't tell them what going back really means, but we go back. And I know that you have served honorably. You have served with high level of integrity and intelligence, and I know you always put your community first. When I served with you for two years, and now that I serve as the City Councilman next door to Ward 1 in Ward 5, you are a definite asset to our community, and it has been a pleasure to work with you, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, because I know this will not be the last thing that you're going to get engaged in. So, thank you.
Commissioner, I mean, Councilman, thank you. And I also want to recognize the fact that it's such a nice thing, the way you come in and welcome your Planning Commissioners. It means so much. I don't think I've seen it before, and I honor you for your concern, and I love you dearly.
Oh, thank you very much.
We'll be in touch.
It's a big deal. It's a big job.
I told him about those 4:30 in the morning meetings early, so he could run now.
Remember those? Yeah, I think those might be on Betamax someplace. Thank God for two meetings. Thank you, guys, and have a fantastic meeting.
Thank you, Councilmen, and we are excited to have Commissioner Williams as well. We're glad he's here with us on the commission. Moving on to our housekeeping items, I don't believe we have any housekeeping items, do we?
No, Mr. Chair. We have no housekeeping items this evening.
Okay, so we will move on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Vice Chair DeSalvio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, I would like to request that we pull item number six and pull item number eight to be heard, and also I'd like to make a motion for approval on the consent for item number seven.
Thank you, Vice Chair. There's a motion for approval on item number seven of the consent agenda. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days.
Thank you. Moving on to the one motion, one vote, I will be pulling number nine off the one motion, one vote to be heard during the public hearing portion. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. I'll read the items in. Item number 10, MOD 76339, applicant owner KB Home NV Acquisition LLC. For possible action, request for major modification of the town center land use plan from MCTC to UCTC Town located -- Town Center, excuse me, located east of Grand Montecito Parkway at the west side of Dobrook Trail Alignment, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Related item number 11, VAC 76340, for possible action, request for petition to vacate public right-of-way, public drainage, public utility, and patent easements located east of Grand Montecito Parkway on the west side of Osoblanca Road, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, VAR 76274, applicant owner DR Horton Inc. For possible action, request for variance to allow a 10-foot front yard setback to the house where 14 is required at 409 Brev Court, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. That is the --
Those are one motion, one vote, so, yes, she'll open a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak, and then one vote.
This was noted as public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on these items. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing portion. Turn it over to the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would like to entertain a motion to approve item 10, 11, and 12, and to pull nine for public hearing.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 10 and 11 will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 17, 2019. Item 12 is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing items, we will first hear six, and we will open eight at the same time. Number six, TMP 75103, applicant owner The Howard Hughes Company LLC. For possible action, request for apparent tentative map for a 43-parcel master plan village with deviations of the Summerlin Improvement Standards at the southwest corner of Lake Mead Boulevard in Clark County 215, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Item number eight, TMP 76354, applicant owner The Howard Hughes Company LLC. For possible action, request for apparent tentative map for a 25-parcel master plan village with deviations of the Summerlin Improvement Standards at the northwest corner of Far Hills Avenue and Fox Hill Drive, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed tentative maps conformed to Nevada Revised Statutes Title 19 and the Summerlin Development Standards and have been approved by the Summerlin Design Review Committee. Staff therefore recommends approval of the tentative maps. At this time, I will pass the items to Public Works for some proposed condition changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Lucian Payet. The applicant requested some change, a couple of changes that we agree with that deal with when they can record their final maps. So, on item six, we'd like to amend condition number 11 to, in the first sentence, to just remove the words "the construction drawings" and replace them with "bonds are posted." And a similar change to item number eight, condition 11, remove the words "the construction drawings" and replace them with "bonds are posted." So this allows them to record a final map if their bonds are posted.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Chris Anderson, 10801 West Charleston, Howard Hughes Property, Director of Engineering, and we agree with the new conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on these two items? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the commission. Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. If nobody has any comments, I would like to entertain a motion to approve accepting the amended red-ended conditions from staff.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for item number six. Please post, and that motion carries.
And same for item number eight, motion to approve with the red-in amendments by staff.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for number eight. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those two items are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within seven days.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number nine, abeyance ZON 76105, applicant owner S&amp;D Grand Properties LLC. For possible action, request for rezoning from PR to C1 at 1353 Arville Street, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the existing general retail sales use conducted on-site is consistent with the proposed limited commercial zoning district. The existing building on the subject parcel will remain compliant with the setback requirements if the proposed rezoning is approved. Surrounding land uses contain a mix of office, retail, and educational land uses consistent with the limited commercial zoning district. As such, staff recommends approval of this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Darla Graham. You want my personal address or the building address?
Building's fine.
1353 Arville Street.
Thank you. Anything you want to tell us about the application before I go to public hearing? No?
No.
No? Okay. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and I will start off. I spoke with Darla earlier today, and I think we addressed all the concerns. You know, as you start to get going down Charleston where there's residential on both sides with a buffer of either professional office, or it goes down to C1 as you start getting farther west from the downtown area, there's always concern about that transition from professional office to residential, and I think staff did get this right, and we did talk about on the phone today about future tenants coming in that were sensitive to waivers and stuff like this. I did talk to Commissioner Quinn briefly about it, and I mean, I don't have a problem supporting it, but that was the reason why we pulled it off before, because there was a little bit of concern of what was coming in. I think everyone's comfortable with the C1 now. It's just hopefully the use can get there. One thing that was brought up that we talked about on the phone, we have people that come and camp behind the building occasionally, all in that area, and I know you guys have tried to keep it clean and keep people moving, and one of the things you mentioned is that the city wouldn't allow you to have a light in the back. Is that something -- it sounded like it was a condition that they had put on them previously because of the residential.
They can have a down.
And I think they do have a downlight right now. Is that correct?
We do. We have on each side of the building a low light that has like a cover type over it that directs the light down.
Okay. Okay, I guess everyone in that neighborhood is just trying to do a little more. I'd like you to explain to me on the phone. So I don't have a problem with the application.
Excuse me through you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for investigating this item of mine. I was out of town, and he did a great job, and I agree with him completely. So, I'm sorry I missed you, but it'll be a great place to fill up, because we need tenants in there. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Even though you did all the work, I'm going to make a motion for approval on abeyance item ZON 76105. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darla.
Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 17, 2019.
Did you hear, Darla, that that does go to City Council? Thank you. Sorry to talk from far away. Where are we? Okay, moving on to number 13, abeyance VAR 75824, applicant Rad Management LLC, owner DSRS Properties LLC. For possible action, request for variance to allow reduced lot sizes and widths for three proposed lots where 20,000 square foot lot size and 100-foot lot width are required, and to allow a rear yard setback of 26 where 35 is required is the minimum required at 835 Shetland Road RE Zone, Ward 1. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to divide the subject parcel into three lots to allow a future mapping realignment. The resulting lots failed to meet the minimum lot size and width requirements. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff therefore recommends denial of the variance request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
How you doing? Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, I'm Russell Shaw, and I'm a resident of Henderson, but I'm representing the property at 2628 West Charleston. I own the property. I'm also a physician practicing at the property.
Thanks. Would you like to tell us about the application?
Sure. So, I've been practicing there for about 14 years, and I acquired at the beginning of this year the property at 835 Shetland. It's a residential property. The medical office I have is about, just about 10,600 square feet. It's medical. It's been there for many decades, and there's a problem with parking for our patients. We have, we're about 25 parking spots less. When I started practicing, we used, we were always short in parking, and so we were trying to solve the parking issue. The patients were parking on this lot during the recession across, you know, it's an empty dirt lot, and as the market has changed, our patients were parking on Shetland Avenue. It's a street that has no sidewalks, no lighting, and so it's a safety issue. So, we acquired the house at 835 Shetland Avenue. It was owned by the previous neurologist that was there that, when he developed it. At that time, I think he was using it, the house portion for his, himself and his staff, but it's still residential. So, the thought process is that we wanted to split the residential lot. It's about, and we're going to keep the Shetland Avenue look exactly the way it look like a house, and we're going to take away the patients that are parking on Shetland Avenue and put them into the back of the residential lot, and this way it's safe for them. They have paved parking, lighting. We redesigned the entire parking so that there's one entrance coming off Charleston and Shetland is one direction. The first variance, there's three, the first variance is to take a sliver of land, which is 10 feet by 100 feet, and it is located, well, it's located at the corner of Shetland, I guess on the west side, and it says the number nine on the map. And it's basically high-yield patient parking. They will all come from Charleston in one direction. They would have the two handicap parking spots next to the radiology facility. They would then only be able to go into those nine spots. Right now, we're, I think it's about 6 feet by 100 feet, but we're, if we can add 10 feet, we get nine parking spots directly. So, it's minimal, it takes away 10 feet, of course, from the Shetland Avenue, and it's a 10 by 100 feet, and it gives 10 high-yield, nine high-yield parking spots in that direction. Once they are filled, there's, we're changing the direction of the entire, from where the entrance is coming on Charleston currently. We're switching it so that all the patients must go in a direction east after those nine parking spots. At that time, they, they will have a two-direction into the back of the residential property where we do the second variance where we split. The split of the lot is like 0.7 acres, 34,000 square feet. What we want to do is put 13 parking spots, all paved with handicap, all patient parking, and then if that fills up, then they come again one direction back onto Charleston Avenue. So all parking spots are utilized before they leave, so all the parking has to be filled before they leave, and then they go around, and then they'll park probably on Shetland Avenue. The idea is, so instead of having 15 cars on Shetland Avenue, they are completely filling up all of our spots onto the property. So, there's three variances from what I can tell. This is a, so the first variance is for the 10 by 100 feet to get nine parking spots, high-yield. The second is to actually split the property in the back, keep the front as residential, and keep the back, and we're going to change it to commercial. And this will solve the whole issue on a permanent basis for this medical property.
Dr. Shaw, before I open this up to the public hearing, I remember this from our, when it was obeyed, did you have a meeting, a public meeting?
Yes. I sent notices to just over 100 residents. We had, I think about five people show up in the first meeting, and then I had two people show up, or one person show up in the second meeting, but then I also talked to the neighbor, I think the second meeting, only, I think, just the neighbor adjacent to the 835 Shetland property, the immediate neighbor, 825 Shetland, came and spoke. In fact, he actually, you know, he's here, and he also spoke to me on last Friday at my office. And I think that they understand why I'm doing this. What's the purpose? I'm a patient advocate, so I'm doing it for my patients. I want safety. I don't want anybody to fall. I'm trying to fix a problem that I've been dealing with for many years. I think that there's a concern in the neighborhood that it's going into commercial. I'm not adding any square footage to this property. I'm just trying to take the situation we have. We have too many patients that park on basically Shetland Avenue. I think that by doing this, Shetland Avenue will look very residential. It'll take away all the commercial from my medical office, at least up to all these spots, which is going to be tremendous. And yes, we'll have a few overflow, because we're short certainly 30, 25 patients a day.
All right, thank you, Dr. Shaw. Okay. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard? Please come forward. See one person? See two people? There are three microphones. Please come up. I need your name and address for the record, if you're for or against, and why.
My name is Chris Andrews Fay, A-N-D-R-A-S-F-A-Y. I live at 825 Shetland Road. My wife and I oppose this variance. We came to the neighborhood to live in a traditional neighborhood that it is, and we do not want to see it changed. As I looked at the interactive agenda today, I don't know if you guys have looked through the whole thing, there's been 17 responses on the postcards and filling out the form. All 17 are against it. That speaks volumes. We are against it in the form that Mr. Shaw proposes. The three variances is, we don't support it. In relation to what he mentioned over parking, I'm the adjacent neighbor, and in my viewpoint, parking on the street is not an issue. There's roughly three to six cars parked there a day, and this is obviously staff. These are the same cars all the time. So, I can understand where that parking is an issue, but I don't think that this variance is the way to go about it. I spoke with Mr. Shaw over an option for 11 spots, but that's not for this case. It's for him to bring up if he wishes, and that would have a little bit more support than this has zero. So, hopefully you guys feel the same way, and we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Your name and address for the record.
My name is Tony McDonald, M-C-D-O-N-A-L-D. I live at 808 Shetland Road. I did meet with Dr. Shaw at his first neighborhood meeting. He's a very nice gentleman. However, I still oppose this, the option he wants to do. I've lived on Shetland for 20 years, and we have people that park, even though we don't have sidewalks and we don't have parking on the street, there is people parked up and down our street, because if they're not parking in the driveway, they're parking. And it's really not a big overflow. As Chris said, it is probably, there may be five or six cars on the street. It doesn't bother me, and I just don't really want to see any professional or commercial use for this property.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no one else, I'll ask the applicant, Dr. Shaw, to come back. I'll give you a minute if you'd like a rebuttal before I turn it over to the commission for discussion.
So, I think that there is, there's, certainly we, there are times that we have quite a few patients that have difficulty parking. We see it, obviously we staggered, tried to decrease the overflow. I think that this, I'm trying to solve an issue where there is a parking shortage of 25 spots, and I can tell you that I do respect my neighbors. They have, at one time, we had so many spots on Shetland Avenue that there were no parking signs toe-away up and down all the way to Palomino. I think that's the other street. We don't want to be like that. We, I've tried to design this that nobody on Shetland will know that there's a commercial parking in the back. I think the longevity of this particular building is probably 30 years. At the end of 30 years, I think that whoever, if I'm not alive, whoever designs this building, they should have smaller square footage print, footprint, not 10,500 square feet, and that if there was something that was granted here in the council, then after 30 years, I'm not looking to change the back property permanently, maybe a 30-year variance that it's only for parking for this particular structure. If they change the structure, whoever owns it, if I don't own it from out here, then it goes back to residential. I understand why neighbors don't want to change anything. I think the street looks beautiful, and I actually think that those five or six parking spots or 15 or 20, we're not going to hurt. Actually, we're going to make it look even more residential, and I think that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Shaw. I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Quinn?
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. You know, the issue is, for me, this is how commercial encroachment starts, okay? So let's say we, you know, are in favor with you tonight. What's to say the guy next door to you wants to do the same thing? So eventually what happens is the commercial weeds into that beautiful neighborhood. To me, that neighborhood starts just north of your office. It's a neighborhood. I'm concerned that the building you're talking about in front of the parking is going to go to C1. That's commercial, and once you get a commercial, you know, designation that close into a neighborhood, it's very hard to say no to the guy across the street, and it encroaches into a neighborhood that is the heartbeat, in my opinion, of Ward 1. I will not support this item. I find it the beginning of an encroachment of commercial into a neighborhood that should be completely, stays the same, looks the same, and if we say yes to you, because you're a good man and you're going to do the right thing, it's hard to say no to the next guy. So, for me, I will not support this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, I mean, just to add on to that, similar to the last item, these are the difficult applications that where you have commercial or professional office next to residential and trying to find transition, this one being right up against the house, and essentially we'd be making non-conforming buildings out of the house and the existing structure. Is that correct?
Yes, Chairman. On the northern lot there, there's actually a condition to demolish that building if this variance were approved.
Okay, and then the house becomes now non-conforming. Is that non-conforming as well?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. So the house, because of the variance that would be approved here, that lot now becomes non-conforming as to the RE standards. So while they wouldn't necessarily have to come forward with the, any new variance, as long as it continues to be a house. long as it continues to be a house, the lot would be substandard now for the RE requirements with regard to lot size for, and lot coverage potentially for this smaller lot.
Thank you. And again, I'm comparing to the last application, but if the last application came forward, they wanted C1 and a bunch of waivers and variances, I wouldn't have been supportive of the application. And I think you put forward something that might make good common sense, but the repercussions on the other side, I think, are too greater, so I won't be supporting it as well. Can I get a motion?
May I ask one question?
I think we're going to go to vote at this point.
Thank you. Regarding item number fourteen, abeyance variance, I'm sorry, thirteen, abeyance variance seven five eight two four, I'm following staff's recommendation this evening for denial.
There's a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. The yes vote is for denial.
I don't, I don't have it.
Click up here, click up here, right there.
Oh, sorry. Got it.
Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard for their consideration at the July seventeenth, twenty nineteen council meeting.
So you're clear it's going to move forward, Doctor? You'll, it'll be heard again at City Council?
I understand.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number fourteen, abeyance SDR seven six zero six two, site development plan review, public hearing applicant owner Hellfire Media LLC, proposed action request for site development plan review for proposed one thousand five hundred and forty-two square foot addition to an existing ten thousand five hundred and ninety-four square foot museum with waivers of the downtown Las Vegas overlay parking and setback standards at six hundred East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three, staff recommends approval. I will disclose that I do live within the notification area. I don't believe it affects me any greater or lesser, so I will be voting on the application. Staff, can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, while the proposed development does not meet Title Nineteen setback and parking requirements, staff does find that the proposal is in harmony with the goals and intent of the Vision Twenty Forty-five Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan and surrounding properties. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the site development plan review. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Jason Mahew, six five two Middlegate Henderson, eight nine oh one five, here representing the owner. What we're trying to do here is to add an additional space onto the front of the buil, well, onto the side of the building, on the sixth street side of the building, which is going to be a garage, basically, so he can showcase a couple of haunted vehicles, and then also have some office, additional office space on the second level of the building there. The reduction in the side setback there was so that way we could get two cars in there. If we lose that five feet, we would only be able to put one car in there. The owner does have a parking agreement with the Masonic Lodge to use forty of their parking spaces, and they patrol up and down six to make sure that their clients are not parking over there. We abated from the last meeting so that way I could meet with the HOA of that area, the HOA president, I met with him yesterday, and he did say that he would give us his approval for this. So if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you. This is noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one from the public, I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. I will say, I think you guys have done a much better job now managing the cars that have kind of lined up during busy times with the, for the haunted experience. I've never made it inside the building. So I think I'm fine supporting this, and I'm happy to make a motion if it, okay? Item number fourteen, I'll make a motion for, I can't, yeah, I can make a motion. Yeah. Yeah, of course. I can kind of do anything I want. All right. Item number fourteen, abeyance SDR seven six zero six two, I will make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days.
So it's final action?
It is final action this evening.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. You all have a wonderful night.
You too, thank you. Moving on to related items fifteen through seventeen. Item fifteen, VAR seven six three three five, applicant owner Patron Investments LLC, proposed action request for a variance to allow zero-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required at sixteen eighteen and sixteen twenty-two East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three, staff recommends denial. Related item sixteen, VAR seven six three three six, proposed action request for a variance to allow thirty parking spaces where thirty-two parking spaces are required, Ward Three, staff recommends denial. And finally, related item number seventeen, SDR seven six three three seven, proposed action request for site development plan review for proposed eight hundred and seventy-one square foot addition to an existing building with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the north perimeter where fifteen feet is required, and a zero-foot landscape buffer along the east perimeter where eight feet is required. Ward Three, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development does not meet Title Nineteen setback parking and landscape buffer requirements. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff concludes that the applicant's hardships are preferential in nature. Staff therefore recommends denial of all applications. Please note that there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, my name is Angel Diaz, seventeen twenty-four East Charleston Boulevard.
What was, what was your last name, sir?
Angel Diaz.
Angel Diaz. Thank you. Mr. Diaz, could you tell us about the application?
Yeah, we just try to make this building looks better for the city.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
We just try to build this building better to the city. You see, it's a bunch of stuff there. We want to construct a new restaurant there for the, look better for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Starting off with me, or Lou, Commissioner DeSavio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I drove past this property two days ago, and honestly, I think it would be an improvement if something was placed on that site, just to, like Mr. Diaz stated, to clean up that situation that's going on over there. I'm actually, I know it's a popular restaurant, very popular restaurant, I think it would, it would be in a good location. To me, I think it's harmonious and compatible based on what's already there. So I mean, I could see myself supporting it.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz, have you, on the landscaping, there wasn't any way to get any more landscaping on the site?
There's no space for the parking, that's what it is, no space for the parking. I just try to get more space for our customers.
Oh, I understand. I just, I look at a zero-foot landscape buffer, you know, and it looks like residential on the backside of our, of the building. And I agree with Vice Chair DeSavio, I think it's a great improvement and something that will take something that's run down and make it a lot better. I just also want to be sensitive to a variance with neighbors directly behind us, and as we try to improve Charleston, you know, try to make sure that we have landscaping and...
This property, that's the owner's property, so that's why we want to put a good money there, so it looks, it's going to be like the start for new company. So you're going to take like a design for that one.
Flagship.
Okay.
Yeah, I can also, the property, he's rented, but this one is his own, so he's going to try to look better.
And I appreciate that. You know, we struggled down Charleston with the temporary signs that are constantly put up, and again, I keep going back to landscaping, there's a project on Maryland and Charleston where there was a great improvement with the Circle K and the Savers, and it really starts to shine.
They started doing a good job there.
Yeah, doing a great job there, and, and, but, Vice Chair, did you want to go forward with the motion?
Yes, seeing no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve VAR seven six three three five.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item sixteen, VAR seven six three three six.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number seventeen, SDR seven six three three seven.
Is a motion on the floor, please cast your votes. Please post, and that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eighteen, VAR seven six four eight six, applicant owner Lone Mountain Estates LLC, proposed action on a request for a variance to allow no off-site improvements where such are required for an approved single-family residential subdivision at the southwest corner of Grand Canyon Drive and Helena Avenue, Ward Four, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, approval of this variance request would result in the removal of pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, sanitary sewer, drainage improvements, and landscaping in the public right of way. Subsequently, subsequently, any cost, any cost to provide possible future off-site improvements would be borne by the city. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff concludes that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Staff therefore recommends denial of variance request. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Robert Cunningham, sixty thirty South Jones Boulevard with Tanning Engineering. What we have, or our request tonight, is to, a variance to allow the offsites to be waived for a portion of Helena and a portion of Grand Canyon. This is the overall assemblage of property for this development. The portion you see that's in green here is the portion in the city. The balance of the majority of the site being developed is in the county. These are a series of forty thousand and thirty thousand square foot lots located on the far west side of town near Lone Mountain, which is right in the background here. The county has allowed us to move forward with leaving the streets as is and putting a covenant on the property owners, so when street improvements are ever required in this area, all the property owners would equally bear and pay for their fair share cost of it. That's the conditions been placed on all the properties in this assemblage of property, except for what's in the city. The city has put a waiver, administrative waivers being allowed, but what's being requested is that the developer basically pay for the improvements off of the bond and fee estimate to the city. What we're trying to do is have all of the development here be equal, so that if you buy a house here, you would have the same exact conditions on your house as here, understanding that this is in the city, this is in the county. That's what we've requested. I understand staff's recommending denial. We're hopeful that you'll allow this to move forward in this fashion. I wanted to share with you what the developer's looking at putting out on the streets, is basically build a wall along the street with, in front of these large estate homes, landscape it, put trees in, and then extend landscaping basically out as far as they can to what would be the pavement. So you'll end up with a very nice, consistent street scene along these streets, on these estate rural lots. We think that being consistent with all of the community as they're going to sell these as large custom homes makes sense. It's our understanding, I've talked to Lucian, and staff has some proposed if conditions and changes. We will work with staff to try to come to some resolve on a fee if we can, but the request was initially to be consistent with what was approved in the county. With that, I'd be happy answering any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. This was noticed as a public hearing, anyone from the public like to be heard in this item? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Toussaint.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Lucian, what kind of conditions are we putting on this property?
So just through the chair to Commissioner Toussaint, to give you a little bit of background, the county and city are working on rural improvement standards today, and we hope to have them adopted this year. What we're requests, what our recommendation is to the conditions is that they pay a hundred percent of what that future improvement, rural improvement will be. So in lieu of paying a hundred percent of the urban improvement, which is the full width of the eighty-foot street, we're recommending that they pay still a hundred percent but of a narrower width. What we've noticed as far as, you know, the difference with the county and the city, with covenants, the reason we, the city moved to a deferral situation is because when we go into the future to do SID, we can only charge the amount that the property, the adjacent property receives in increased value due to the improvement. So just in an extreme example, if a property only receives a penny in increased value from our improvement, we can only charge them a penny. And so we, what we do is we collect the improvement now, and when the ultimate improvement is constructed, we use this money to build the full width. What we believe is that in the ultimate condition, it will still be rural, so it won't, a standard eighty is two lanes in each direction and a center turn lane. We believe the ultimate condition of this road will be center turn lane and just one lane in each direction, so it's a lot narrower than the, than the urban eighty. But we are, as a recommendation, asking that they pay for those improvements in lieu of the full improvement. So I have a condition change, if it's the commission's desire to approve with the if approved condition, I have a condition change to add.
I haven't had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Cunningham, but this really looks like a really nice project, and you are surrounded by counties, so I understand why you want to keep it rural. Are you agreeable to the conditions that staff has recommended?
We're agreeable to work with staff on those conditions. What it amounts to is a fee, basically, that Public Works wants us to pay. Ultimately, the developer would like not to pay any of that fee and be consistent with the county, but we understand there's a happy medium that has to be met, so we're willing to work with them, and on the condition, I don't think the dollar amount is set exactly per the condition, so with that being said, as long as that's the case, we would agree to continue to work with them to hone in on the exact dollar amount with the proposed condition that Lucian has.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Vice Chair DeSavio?
Yes, thank you. Well, seeing I got, just got told the political answer to that question, I'm going to have to vote against this then, if that's the case. Political answer was, he was specifically asked if he would pay the hundred percent, and he says, no, I'll agree to work with staff, not agree to pay. So with that said, I'm not going to support it.
Okay, so I don't, and I guess a question I have, I don't know how we agree on a condition, but then say we're just going to keep working to get there. Is that something we can do, Lucian?
No, Commissioner Chairman, I, I think the way, if we write a condition that is very specific about what they need to pay for, then whatever the bond amount at the time they come in for improvement plans is, that's what they'll have to pay. There won't really be, the part that might be a little bit in question is the current unadopted, what the draft standard they're working on, doesn't address street lighting and intersection improvements. It just addresses a cross-section that, as if it was a straight street and didn't intersect with any other street.
Okay.
So there may be a little bit of clarifying, but I think with the amended condition that I'll have for you, that pretty much spells out everything they'll need to pay for.
Okay, because I, I certainly, yeah.
I just want to remind you that, you know, he's not required to agree to the conditions per se. You can grant or you can put on any condition you believe would make this application more appealable to you. So you're, you're, you're able to do that without his agreeing to the condition.
Okay. Thank you very much. I guess to get my support, we would have to get to that, I'm fine with the narrower condition that Public Works is proposing, but I would need the applicant to agree to that, and I don't, it doesn't sound like there's much of a negotiation, I mean, the bond's going to be what the bond's going to be, and I think the city went through a long process, I remember working with the home builders, to come up a way, come up with a way that makes it so people don't get stuck years down the road with an SID and makes it fair. So I guess I'd ask the applicant, would you be good with the condition that Public Works put on it, puts on the?
The condition that they have, and correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't... The condition that they have, and correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't actually spell out a dollar amount. It just indicates what we would work with staff to bond, you know, off of their bond, what we would agree to pay for.
Okay, so once they come up with their dollar amount, however it is, then you would have to pay it to keep things moving forward. Is that correct, Lucian?
That's correct. They would not be able to get an approved drawing, set of plans, without paying the deferral improvement fee.
Okay. Because I just feel like, Mr. Cunningham, you're stating it like it's a big negotiation after the fact, but it sounds like the city's going to find out what this standard is and say, well, here's the bond, you know, here's the improvement amount. If you'd like to post a bond for it, that can help you move forward.
Okay. If that's the case, then, once we see the amount, yeah, then, I guess, not knowing that amount today, that's the hard part for us to agree to pay an amount. We don't know how much it is, if that makes sense.
Okay, I can understand that, but I can tell you, as a developer, you can look at the other standard that is 100%, and you can say, well, that's what it would take to build this, and that's what my bond would be. And knowing it'd be less, then you can make a decision from there. I mean, that's what I have to do, so.
Right. And that's all I'm saying, is that we agree that we'll meet with Lucian, determine what that amount is, and then, you know, pay it, or we'll have to come back here, I guess.
Okay. But it sounds like we can't hold it because it's going to be a while.
My thing is, Chairman, you can place the condition on him. If he wants to appeal that condition to the City Council, he's able to do that, but you're able to place whatever conditions you believe are warranted at this point in time without his agreeing to it.
Okay. So Lucian, maybe you could read the motion, and if Commissioner Tucson is agreeable, then we can get to a vote.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, and let me just clarify, the reason they're actually asking for the variance is because the code currently requires 100% of the full width. The variance allows them to pay something less than the 100% of the full width. We're still requiring 100%, but it's of a narrower width.
I understand.
And so the change that we'd make in the second, we're adding some, a couple of sentences before the second to last, before the last sentence, we're going to add, it's just to clarify the street lighting fees. So, "Streetlights are not required on Helena Avenue, and street lighting spacing on Grand Canyon Drive shall follow standard drawing 311.1 for a 60-foot width. Street lighting and a sidewalk ramp at the intersection of Helena Avenue and Grand Canyon Drive shall also be considered part of the required off-site improvements."
And Lucian, for the record, to clarify, that was an amendment to condition six.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So we hear an amended condition. Commissioner Tucson?
Yeah, I was confused. I thought it was a conditional maybe here, but I understand now that you're agreeing to whatever staff is saying for the, to go forward.
He doesn't have to agree.
You don't have to agree.
That would be your amended condition.
Right. Well, that would be my amended condition. If I would make, if there are no other comments, I would make a motion to approve with all staff's conditions.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor with amended condition.
And that includes the amended condition.
Amended conditions, yes. Yes.
And that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that matter is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, VAR 76293, applicant owner Cypress Sub 2, LLC, for possible action or request for variance to allow five-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required at a 10-foot rear yard and a 12-foot corner side yard setback where 15 feet is required for proposed single-family dwelling at the northeast corner of Ogden Avenue and 18th Street. Ward three, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development does not meet Title 19 setback requirements. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and staff concludes that the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Staff therefore recommends denial of the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
All right. Stavros Georgiou, 7450 Southeastern Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Could you tell us about the application, please?
Yes, this has always been a dream of mine. I've been somewhat obsessed with shipping container homes. I wanted to do something unique. This is a property or a lot that's been vacant for the last 50 years. I was actually hoping to do a shipping container home. It's going to be unique. I mean, the challenge, I think, is that on the corner, the variance is because on the Ogden side, I have a 15-foot instead of a five-foot, like it would be for a normal lot, which makes my footprint a bit more narrow. The design is to actually have an interior courtyard living, so it's on the inside. I was planning on dedicating the exterior to local artists, to add, to actually beautify the neighborhood, to change the actual murals three to four times a year and keep it interesting and make it, maybe make it more of almost an attraction, and even perhaps a reason to invest more in the area. As you know, people are investing in Fremont Street up to about 15th Street, but past there, there's not much interest. I'm really trying to be, I'd say, a catalyst for future development, perhaps even the style of building for low-income housing in other areas. I guess also, I'm building it with a second suite that's attached with my, with my mother in mind. She's getting a bit older, and I wanted to give her a place to live as well. I guess my one thing that I wanted to point out is that there is a right-of-way, there's a bit of a buffer to the curb from where the house would end. There's an 18-foot buffer on 18th Street. There's also, I think, about an eight-foot right-of-way on Ogden Street. I spoke with Steve Quebecy in planning about whether 18th Street or Ogden would ever in the future have plans for expansion. He didn't see any reason why there would be. So I'm hoping that I'd be able to actually ask for those variances to push the, push it out towards, push the, excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous, to push the footprint a bit out further towards 18th Street. I'm working with shipping containers, so they are standard sizes of 40-foot and 20-foot, so I don't have that much sway that way, and I was really hoping to preserve the interior courtyard for the maximum space.
Okay, thank you. This was noted as a public hearing, and it from the public like to be heard in this item. Seeing no one, I will turn it over to the Commission for Discussion. Trinity's not here, so I will kick it off. You know, when I first saw it come through, I saw the big stack with the mural art, so I was a little confused on what we were looking at. And I was just saying, it's just an example of what you wanted to do with the mural art, but I read shipping containers, I saw that, and I thought, what's going on with the five-story building? As I started to get into it, I started to understand it more.
Sorry, yeah.
That's okay. I think you're going into an area, you know, when people think of why I live in my neighborhood, they think it's a tough neighborhood, and it's back, you know, 15 years ago, we tried to be a catalyst for something, and I think that your building would be doing the same. I agree that it's, you know, after 50 years, it's nice to see something come forward, and as residential. And it does stop kind of at Maryland Parkway and drops off with developments that are there. And I know Trinity, he's developed some stuff and done a great job with his projects in that area. So I see there is a staff recommended, has recommended denial. I can understand why, because it doesn't meet the boxes with the variances, but this is something, I think, different and unique, and it is in the downtown area, so going to zero lot line, I think, can work, especially being on a thoroughfare on two sides with Ogden and 19th. So this will have my support on the application. Yeah, unless anyone else, Commissioner Tucson?
I, no, I grew up in this area. I grew up downtown, and I just think this is awesome. I think it's out of the box. It's forward-thinking, and I'm really excited about it. Thank you for proposing this.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Tucson?
Motion to approve VAR 76293.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
May I say something else?
Give me one second.
I don't know if it's just a good timing or not.
Yeah.
Don't talk yourself out of it.
Yeah. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item will go forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 17, 2019.
Okay, wonderful. Did you want to say something quickly before?
I was going to ask, I know it's a bit after a fact. I did ask for the, for the distance in the rear as far as a 10-foot, but if I was to go 15-foot and give that more space, because there is a telephone pole back there? I mean, not a telephone pole, but...
Is this going on to City Council?
At this point, we voted it's approved. It will go to City Council. So that's something that you can discuss there at that point.
Check with your staff planner, because if you make any adjustments that diminish the amount of setback that you indicated here, it actually will have to start all the way back through the process, because you'll have to renotice it. So if you intensify any of the deviations that you're requesting, even if you're offsetting it elsewhere, we'll have to start it all over, just as a heads-up.
I'll be happy with the way it is then.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 20, VAR 76338, applicant Alex Mazzola, owner Brandy Mazzola Living Trust, for possible action or request for a variance to allow a zero-foot sideyard setback for an existing structure, Class II detached patio structure, where three feet is required at 8308 West Deer Springs Way. Ward six, staff recommends denial.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I'd like to state that I do know the Mazzola family, and I have done business with the Mazzola brothers at different times, and so I'll be abstaining from any conversation or voting on this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Thank you for the disclosure. Appreciate that. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a variance to allow an existing 113-square-foot accessory structure, Class II detached patio structure, which is setback zero feet from the east property line where three feet is required and was constructed without obtaining building permits. On the basis of the above information, staff finds that the applicant's hardship is self-imposed, and therefore, staff recommends denial of this request. Please note that additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
Alex Mazzola, 8308 Deer Springs, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89149. And my wife, Brandy Mazzola. We built this in the backyard, when we purchased this house in January about two years ago, we redid the whole front yard. I'm talking about tore everything up. The inside of the house tore everything up. We put probably about $70,000 in upgrading our whole house. The backyard thing matches with everything we've done, with pavers, and the people we shared the wall with are actually neighbors of ours that, probably the best neighbors you could have. They're actually here today. And we did walk up and down Deer Springs, and out of 33 houses, 27 of them signed approved, and the six that did not were just not home. They didn't decline or anything. They weren't home to answer. We didn't know, I didn't know that I needed permission to build in the backyard a barbecue, and that was my fault. So we think that somebody saw a Facebook picture, it was an old neighbor. Long story short, they have called on us, and now we see that, you know, we made a mistake. It did cost me about $17,000 to build this. Owner built, and I'm hoping somehow we could, you know, figure out the variance and get this passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzola. This was noted as a public hearing, and it from the public like to be heard. If I can get your name and address for the record, please, and if you're for or against.
My name's Patricia Alvers. I live at 8304 Deer Springs Way. The trees you see in these pictures are mine. Those are in my yard.
Nice tree.
I think one of the nice things about Brandy and Alex living next door to us is that they have done all the improvements that actually make my house worth more. But really, one of the more compelling parts of this is that Timberlake, our development, is not actually a traditional HOA. It's a landscape and maintenance association, so we actually are responsible for that wall. So I get that it's within three feet, but at the same time, it's kind of, if something happens to it, we've had a neighbor who had a hit-and-run that they were responsible for fixing. And so if something with this happened, it would be up to Brandy and Alex or myself to fix the wall. And we think the kitchen is great. I am an original owner here, along with that house that was built at the same time as mine, and it has never, ever looked as nice with as much care taken. And I'm, we're thrilled to have them there. After all of the foreclosures on our street and in our development, it's just really nice that people are investing in that. And I would really encourage you to approve this.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? I see one more person. Anyone else after this gentleman? No, last person. Need your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name is Ron Calderon, 8320 Falmborough Court. I'm in favor of allowing the variance on this particular property. I don't know the individuals, but I did see pictures of their backyard, and I did go past the front of their house, and they did an extremely well job on the front. And it would just be nice if the rest of the people in that association would take as much care and pride in their home as I see that they did. So I'm in support of it, and I hope that you will allow that variance. You don't have any negative complaints from the people that are surrounding that particular home. And as the neighbor just spoke, who is right next door to it and shares that same wall, she's also in favor of that variance. So I think that since there is no negative feedback on this particular request for the variance, that it would be allowed by the council.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. Okay, seeing no else, I'll close the public hearing, turn over to the Commission for Discussion. Commissioner DeSavio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looks like we got the trifecta here. We got the HOA has no problem, the neighbors got no problem, and I don't have no problem. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion for approval of this item.
There's a motion on the floor.
For VAR 76338.
Please post. And that motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within 10 days.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mazzola, weren't you citizen of the month?
I'm citizen of the month.
So you went from hero to zero.
What are you doing, calling me, making me come down here when I'm a citizen of the month? Huh? What's going on in here?
All right. Good luck to you, Mr. Mazzola.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If he could also submit that petition to the clerk.
Yeah, Mr. Mazzola, could you hand the petition in to the clerk?
For the record.
For the record?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Mr. Mazzola.
Okay, item number 21, I will be abstaining from. It relates to the cannabis industry, which my family is in, and to Mr. Siloto, who I consider a friend. So I will turn over to Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 21, VAR 76344, is a variance. Application has been. Siloto, owner 1800 Industrial LLC, for possible action or request for a variance to allow a zero-foot setback where five feet is required for two proposed monument signs at 1800 Industrial Road in Ward three. Staff recommends a denial. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to install two double-sided monument signs at an existing marijuana dispensary. The proposed signs are positioned over two landscape islands containing trees, thus requiring removal of existing planting materials. While moving the proposed monument signs five feet from the property line would allow conformance to Title 19 requirements, this would result in an encroachment into the existing drive aisle on the subject property. However, an existing wall sign for the marijuana dispensary is contained on the subject site. Additionally, the use is advertised on a billboard located adjacent to the subject site facing Industrial Road. As such, staff has determined that the proposed signage is inconsistent with the intent of Title 19 signed development standards. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this project. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
For the record, Ben Siloto, 1800 Industrial Road. I'm here representing Oasis Cannabis. And I appreciate the time that staff spent reviewing this. You know, it's not necessarily about advertising of the use, it's more about a safety issue. So, you know, we're proud of what we've done in the last four years since we've been on Industrial Road. We're part of the gateway redevelopment, and we've done a lot to beautify that building itself and also to attract additional businesses to the area. And as a result, occupancy has both increased and visitation to our building has increased. And if you look at the way the traffic flows on the property here, you can see that the parking in the front of the building requires the entrance on the north side of the property. And then, the way that you access Oasis Cannabis is on the south side of the property through this driveway here. So what we have is an issue where these people, people that are parking here, they need to, they need to enter the property on this side, and then everyone really should be entering the property on this side, so that we have a smooth flow of traffic from the north side to the south side of the property, and then back to the lot, where people are entering and exiting through this driveway. And there's enough room, but then when you add, you know, people coming in in this spot while people are coming out, and then coming here, you kind of have this traffic congestion that's occurring. A setback of five feet would actually put those signs within the driveway. So, you know, we're aware of the beautification with the landscaping, and we're open to making concessions to try to provide landscaping there as well. But we think it's important to address the traffic flow. We're seeing a number of visitors each day, and it's only We're seeing a number of visitors each day, and it's only increasing, and we would like to get ahead of the issue. So with that, I would love to entertain any questions.
This is noted as a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open up to the commissioners. I guess it'd be me. I got just a couple of questions, because in the briefing, you want to remove like your only landscape.
Sure. It certainly does seem counterintuitive to the beautification of the lot, and that wasn't an easy decision to make. And like I said, if the commission would like to impose a condition of, you know, replanting some landscaping when we're finished with the signage, I think we'd be happy to.
And that leads me into that, too. There's like signage everywhere on that building, on poles that it's not supposed to be. You got a billboard sign that's, you know, a couple hundred feet up or whatever, pointing with a big arrow. You got, I mean, there's just so much signage. Can I just ask why you need more signage and remove a landscape buffer to obtain it?
It's not necessarily a matter of needing more signage. It's certainly an accessory signage. It's not something that is, when you drive down Industrial Road at this point now, it's really hard to miss Oasis Cannabis, so that's not.
Why are we here, then?
It's really a traffic flow issue. We really do have a problem with traffic.
But you're putting a sign in lieu of, it's still putting a sign where a landscape is, so you're not driving over the sign, you're not driving over the landscape, so exactly, I'm trying to figure this out here, why are we asking for this, then?
The property doesn't have any indication now that the people that are parking in the front need to enter on the north side of the building. So there's no way for traffic to know that that is where you need to enter. So people that even enter on the south side of the building are then, that are trying to access the north side of the lot as well as the front of the lot, they're driving in the wrong direction and counterintuitive to the flow of traffic. So it's just with the number of visitors that we've seen increase to the property, it's just become a little bit of a concern, and the landlord supports this because his other tenants have expressed concern with there not being any clear flow of traffic for the site. So it's certainly understandable that the signage would say our name there, and that's because we're paying for it for the landlord, and he doesn't want to pay for it, but we do think that it's an important thing.
All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Tucson?
Yeah, I just have a problem that you're not having any landscaping there. I mean, I think this is going back to the way we used to be, where we would just have asphalt everywhere. It's hot. Personally, I think you need to put some plants in there. I really do. I just think that.
I love plants. I just tore out a bunch of concrete in the backyard of the house I bought and put it in a garden.
Yeah, I love plants, too. And I just think we need to put some plants in there. I think you can make your sign smaller and then put some plants in there.
Commissioner Tucson, you have a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to go with staff's recommendation to deny, VAR 76344.
Y'all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. Yes vote is for denial. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, that item will move forward to city council and be heard as a part of their agenda on July 17, 2019.
Okay. Moving on to item number 22, VAR 76345. Applicant owner, S.S. &amp; D Properties LLC. For possible action or request for a variance to allow zero-foot setback where five is required until a 320-square-foot sign area, where 194 square feet is the maximum allowed for proposed freestanding sign at 1809 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant proposes to erect a freestanding sign adjacent to Las Vegas Boulevard with a zero-foot setback where five feet is required. Additionally, the applicant also requests to increase the permitted sign area by 64% to allow a sign area of 320 square feet, where 194 square feet is the maximum allowed. While the site is currently undeveloped, Site Development Plan Review, SDR 73846, was approved by the Planning Commission on August 14, 2018, to allow a proposed restaurant use, which will function as an IHOP at the subject site. As the proposed signage is inconsistent with Title 19 development standards and no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff recommends denial of this project. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners John Vorntan, 62 Swan Circle Henderson, representing the application. When the current owners purchased the rumble motel in April of last year, it was already severely damaged by a fire started by vagrants. The owners then had the motel razed and started to work on redevelopment of the property. The owners wanted to provide a new development that would not only foster economic development and growth in this area, but provide a development that the city could point to with pride. The result was an IHOP restaurant. Not your typical IHOP. This is a 6,300-square-foot restaurant that'll be the flagship of the IHOP franchise. This is a request for the freestanding sign for the project. As you can see, the site is exceptionally narrow when compared to its depth. It's about half the width, or about 150-foot width, or 100-foot width, rather, by 300-foot depth. This has created practical difficulties in locating the place for the freestanding sign. The sign is proposed at the same setback and encroachment as the existing rumble sign. The proposed sign is smaller at 320 square foot. The existing rumble sign is 345 square feet. The height is slightly higher than the rumble sign. This is preferable because of the, it gives actually more clearance in the area of the encroachment. Insofar as the encroachment is concerned, Public Works has indicated they have no objection to that. In fact, as the Public Work Director has stated to us, that the proposed placement location will work with our Las Vegas Boulevard project design. Of course, this would be, and he also said the sign looked great, in his opinion, but this would be also, of course, subject to a license agreement. The project is being done through the New Market Tax Credit Program, and we're also working with the city's Economic Development Department and partnering with institutions through that program. We're also working with the Neon Museum in the city in preserving the rumble motel sign as it is a part of the city's history. We would respectfully request your approval of this application so that our project can move forward. We're in agreement with all staff's approved recommendations and public works recommendations, and glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This is noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item? Did you want to come up and speak? If you can come up to the podium, I'll need your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Shawna Shury. I'm the owner of the building at 1809 South Las Vegas Boulevard. And as John was saying, I mean, I bought this property back in April of last year, and when I bought it, I inherited a mandatory notice of demolition that code enforcement put on it. And the reason they put on, they put it is because, I mean, vagrants and homelesses occupied this vacant motel and three times lit it on fire, and it was just, I mean, a disaster there. And as soon as I bought it, I put 24-hour security. I've been cleaning up that place every single day. I've had security on there. And, I mean, it's, I've been really maintaining that area, cleaning graffiti, cleaning up trash, kicking homeless people out. I mean, I've really done my part, and I really think that this project will be a catalyst for other businesses to come in an area where I think there's a future for it, and hopefully it'll be pedestrian-friendly. And this sign is all neon. I mean, it's what, it's in that area where neon signs are preferred, and I think it's going to light up the area and really, and really help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shury. So you're for it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. Commissioner Quinn?
I just want to say it's a beautiful project, and I know when John puts his name behind something, he's been around a long time, and he knows a good project to represent and one not to, so I'll be supporting your item tonight.
Thank you. I feel the same way. It is a great project. Commissioner Quinn?
Regarding item number 22, variance, what is it, VAR 76345, my motion this evening is for approval following all staff's recommendations.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post, and that motion carries. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 23, SUP 76351. Applicant, I need cash now. I do. Owner, Red Feather Property LLC. For possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 1,730-square-foot financial institution, specified use with waivers to allow a 59-foot distance separation from a parcel zone for residential use where 200 feet is required, and a 660-foot distance separation from another financial institution specified where 1,000 feet is required at 3281 North Decatur Boulevard, Suites 250 and 260, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is located within an existing shopping center and within the C-2 General Commercial Zoning District and is subject to Title 1912 development standards. The proposed location of this use fails to comply with the minimum distance separation requirements for the requested special use permit. From residentially-zoned parcel, the proposed 59-foot residential distance separation waiver represents a 70% reduction from the required 200-foot separation mandated by Title 19. The 660-foot distance separation waiver from a similar use represents a 34% distance separation reduction from the 1,000 feet mandated by Title 19. There is also one financial institution specified use within 1,000 feet of the subject location, and the addition of one more represents an overconcentration of the use in the local area. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested special use permit. Please note that additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good after, or good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. My name is Tony Sless. Address, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. Here on behalf of the applicant, if I may direct your attention to the overhead, you can see the property is located right here in two suites that constitute about 1,700 square feet. It is a large commercial shopping complex located on major arterials of Decatur, Cheyenne, and Rancho. Directly across, or Kitty Corner, is the North Las Vegas Airport. We are in a busy commercial shopping center here. We did have a voluntary proactive neighborhood meeting. That neighborhood meeting was a week ago Monday on June 3. Only people in attendance were myself and Ms. Kelly Wood from Councilman Creer's office, so we were able to chat for a little bit, but we stayed for about 45 minutes, and no neighbors did attend. Understand staff's position on this, but I think we have a couple of points here that do make it compatible. First, with respect to the separation to residential, you can see directly to the north, we are only about 60 feet from the residential. We have a local street that separates us, but this is the backside of the residential, all of the commercial fronts towards Cheyenne and Decatur. It is a large commercial shopping center with a lot of diverse uses in it. It's a heavily trafficked area. This use would not provide any additional traffic or anything like that. As even indicated in the staff report, this shopping center apparently is already parking impaired, but our use is so minimal and so not impactful that it does not require any additional parking spaces. Number two, this is something that actually was recently hashed out at a city council hearing, and that is with respect to measuring distances to commercial shopping, or to commercial subdivisions. And I'm not going to get into that argument. I just think it's an interesting point that you can see right here is our site. And then outside this 1,000-square-foot, or this 1,000-foot ring is the other commercial, or the other financial institution. So from door to door, it does exceed 1,000 feet. Also, this is on its own fee simple parcel right here. It is about 1,000 feet. However, the city has taken the position, and I'm not here to relitigate that, but just taking the position that it is measured from commercial subdivision to commercial subdivision, which would be right here at the point of Rancho and Cheyenne. That's about 660 feet. So kind of a technical nature, but again, it's, you know, on three major ride-aways, Decatur, Cheyenne, Rancho, North Las Vegas Airport in this area. So we do think there are some mitigating circumstances with respect to that, and we do believe it's compatible. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one from the public, I'll turn it over to the commission. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I do, I do understand the 60-foot to residential explanation, and that makes sense. However, you know, the purpose of the distance separation is so like businesses aren't clustered on top of each other. And so, you know, looking at this situation in its totality, I have to say I actually agree with the staff recommendation in the report on this one.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Commissioner? Commissioner DeSavio?
I just got a, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got a question for staff, because that one's a new one to me. Since when do we go from property line to property line? I mean, in the past, I, you know, I'm just going to use as an example a short-term rental. If that marker was on top of that house and it was outside that ring, then, you know, it was always, they were good to go. And I'm just trying to figure out now, since when are we hearing that it goes from the frontage of the property to the corner of the other property, and now they're not conforming when the ring specifically shows that the other business is outside? I'm just trying to figure that out.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so to use the applicant's words, to not relitigate an issue that council already voted on. So we've, for 25 years, used that as our measurement for distance separation. So I'm not quite sure on the short-term rentals, it was always if the property line touches the radius circle, then it's in the radius. And so for 25 years, that's been the city's mechanism for measuring distance separations.
Thank you. I guess if I could jump in, one of the differences in this conversation is the arrow. The property line is still within the circle, right? It's still one parcel. Is that correct? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. So yet, the individual tenant space is outside the circle as indicated. However, the commercial center where they access the property, where they're parking and everything else, that commercial center is all one parcel, and that is within the distance separation.
Okay. Commissioner?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the only point I was trying to make is that, and again, I'm not, the only point I was trying to make is not only is the, it outside the circle, but the actual fee simple parcel located right here is just about outside the 1,000 square feet, where you could actually buy this particular parcel, not the whole commercial shopping center, is located here. I understand, though, that staff has taken the position that it's measured to the entire commercial subdivision, which would be right here. And so that was, that was the point I was trying to make, and why, and I understand your motion, Commissioner, but why we felt that it really isn't oversaturated. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
So I'd like to motion on item SUP 76351, motion to deny.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes. Yes vote is for denial. Please post, and that motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward for city council consideration as a part of their agenda on July 17, 2019.
Great, thank you. You guys have a good evening.
You, too. Thank you. Moving on to item number 24, SDR 76332. Applicant, Hot Diggity Dog Daycare. Owner, The Task C. Harden and Louis C. Harden Revocable Family Trust, Louis I. Harden Revocable Trust Family Trust. For possible action or request for a site development plan review for proposed 10,000 square-foot pet boarding facility on the south side of Reg. Coach Avenue, west of Rancho, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to construct a 10,000-square-foot pet boarding facility on an undeveloped lot. The current zoning is C-1 Limited Commercial with an SC Service Commercial General Plan designation. Pet boarding is a conditional land use in the C-1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. Per the submitted justification letter, the proposed use meets all conditional use requirements. In addition, the subject site adheres to all required parking and landscaping requirements outlined in Title 19. As the proposed use meets all applicable Title 19 development standards, staff finds the use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing developments in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Richard Gallegos, 6725 Southeastern here on behalf of the applicant. We do understand and concur with the recommendations. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. I do have the rendering, you can see on the overhead, but with that, again, I'll ask, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioner. Commissioner Tucson?
Mr. Gallegos, I am very excited about this project. I love my dog and I love that my dog having a place to play. I haven't been to doggy daycare before, but my daughter brings her dog to doggy daycare all the time. And if there are no further reports or anything from my fellow commissioners, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Please cast your votes.
Oh, are you moving from your current location or is this a new one?
This will be expanding from the current location.
Oh, good, because my daughter goes to the other one.
Thank God.
Yes. And we have, we do have a space for you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Do I need to ask a question? Does she, she doesn't owe him any money, does she?
I don't think so.
Okay, good. Okay, you're okay, Commissioner.
I don't think so.
Wait, I want to vote on this.
Please, please, yeah.
So Tallulah and Daisy love going there.
Please post. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 25, SDR 76350, applicant owner, True Love Missionary Baptist Church. For possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed parking lot expansion at 1941 H Street, Ward 5. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject's site is partially developed with an existing church. Currently, there's an approximately 72-foot wide area adjacent to the north perimeter and a 49-foot wide area adjacent to the west perimeter, which remains undeveloped within the existing parking lot area. The applicant has proposed to pave the undeveloped area within the parking lot to mitigate dust control and aid in protecting air quality in the area. Pursuant to an approved building permit, implied plan review date stamped 09051974, the subject's site was required to provide a five-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to the north perimeter of the site and a one-foot-wide landscape buffer adjacent to a portion of the east perimeter. Within the north landscape buffer, five-gallon oleander shrubs were required to be planted four feet off-center. Also, five-gallon juniper shrubs were required to be planted three feet off-center within the one-foot landscape buffer adjacent to H Street. The applicant has requested an exception of planting materials to allow no planting materials throughout the subject's site. Due to the proposed removal of all required planting materials from the parking lot area, staff has determined that the proposed project is not compatible with the surrounding development in the area and will have a negative impact to the adjacent multifamily residential development to the north and south and single-family residential development to the east of the subject's site. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this project subject to conditions. Please note that additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Haley Shinton, 4310 Cameron Street, Suite 12A. Here on behalf of the applicant, I just want to really quickly state that this, the purpose of this application is really to just mitigate the dust control. Gets pretty busy on Sundays and over in the sections of the parking lot that are not paved. It causes, you know, people park over there, causes a lot of dirt and dust to fly up in the air. So the purpose of this is just to mitigate that. The church does have plans for in the future to add in addition to the existing building once the proper funds are in place, at which time all zoning and building code requirements will be met. We respectfully ask for your approval of this item and I'm free to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is noticed as a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to be heard? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Turn it over to Commissioner. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on this item, I understand staff's recommendation for denial. I am wondering, though, why ultimately no plant material is a request?
So because of the future plans to add on to the existing building, at which time, you know, landscaping and everything would be proposed, all the, if we were required to do any landscaping with this pavement of the parking lot, all of that would get demolished for the new construction that would be taking place for the addition.
And what's the timing on the new construction?
I'm not sure about that. I think they have to get the proper funds in place for that, but I'm, I don't have a timeframe.
And so the concern would be, you know, not in compliance with the requirements for landscaping under Title 19, but I'd really, I'm wondering if, if the business would be willing to, again, meet with staff to talk about alternatives or possibilities. And I'd even be willing to meet with the business to better understand ultimately what they're looking to do on-site.
Okay.
So I'd like to hold this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We can hold it one time, so between now and the next meeting, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay. And just to kind of add on to Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, the next meeting or 30 days?
30 days, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. To add on to what Commissioner Williams was saying, I mean, I'm looking at it, I understand, you know, it's hard to raise funds and it's hard to get things going quickly. It would have been just nice, even on the sliver, to see, on the frontage road, to see something there, you know, just some box hedges, some dwarf oleanders, something, you know, just to kind of come forward. And I understand the requirement is probably to put a lot in the parking lot and, but it would be nice to see a little something out there. And I think in the end, the applicant would be really happy with what they see. But you're okay with withholding it 30 days on abeyance as well?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll work with Commissioner Williams to come up with a plan.
Appreciate that very much. There's a motion. If you'd like to come up to the microphone, I'll need your name and address for the record.
Of course. My name is Scotty Marks. I'm 416 Pine Cliff Drive and I'm representing the owner of the True Love Baptist Church and the pastor. I would like to maybe perhaps discuss some of those concessions right now instead of holding it over 30 days.
Actually, I'd like to hold this item for the 30 days and we can have a site visit and really discuss a big picture, looking at the site.
Okay. Again, we're just looking to get this paved so that.
Scotty, we're going to have a motion now for abeyance for 30 days, so there's nothing more to really talk about as far as what you want to have on the site. We've heard it from the first time. So going with Mr. Commissioner Williams' motion for abeyance, can we get a vote, please?
And that would be July 9th?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. 30-day abeyance. Please post. And that motion carries. And Scotty, just so you know, you have plenty of time to work it out and be at the site visit and convey your message at that point.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as any time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Anyone like to be heard during this portion? Seeing no one, I will just quickly say, welcome to Commissioner Williams and we're